Ms. Waldo, any public comments?
Yes, sir.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item 11 B and C.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Landis, Mr. Kimbrough, discussion, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Barr. Counts payable?
Yes, we have, uh, what is it, Mr. Steel? Counts payable before the board this evening to pay for instructional items and non-instructional items. And Angie's helping me with the trail.
I'm sure she has the right names.
I got it.
I don't have the right names tonight. They're just not working.
It's a pretty big file. The administration recommends the board approve payment of bills in amount of nineteen million, eight hundred forty thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars, twenty-four cents.
So moved.
Take it.
Mr. Wilcoxon, Mr. Landis, discussion, please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Program evaluation, Parents as Teachers.
Dr. Huff? All right. We have our Parents as Teachers director here this evening, and I think Lisa Oring's coming up, so I'm gonna pitch it to Lisa, and we'll get rolling with that one. Excited, Parents as Teachers got some good news in the governor's budget, proposed budget, anyway, last week, if I remember right. Isn't that correct?
Trying to replace part of the money that was taken about four years ago. So gradually replacing that, so.
Well, it's my pleasure this evening to have Patty here and talk about our fabulous Parents as Teachers program, and it has definitely grown over the last few years, and we currently have nine halftime educators. And I'm gonna turn it over to Patty, so that she can tell you all of the different highlights of Parents as Teachers.
Well, I think each of you got in your packet some of our new brochures that we're passing out. We're trying to place those brochures for developmental screenings in all the child-friendly places in the community. And then we also have the new flyers that we're putting out in childcare centers and different places like that as well. One of the things that Kelly has helped Parents as Teachers a great deal this year is developing our Facebook page that's connected with the Joplin School District, so we've got that up and going. We've gotten a couple of good, I like clicks on it, I guess. I'm not a very apt Facebook person, so, but we have posted a few things. We have a webpage. Kelly showed me how to put things on the calendar, so we can post our parent socializations on the calendar. And we have moved from being a child development information program only towards being a family strengthening program. Several years ago, Parents as Teachers nationally realized that child doesn't develop in a bubble. Their development doesn't just happen just there, and, you know, the whole family impacts how a child's development is going. And so we have branched out to where we're really focusing on strengthening families. We talked to families about goal-setting, not only for their children, but also for the family. We talk about resources, community resources that the family can access. And so it's really become a full program developing, you know, strong, healthy families. We have taken part of that, or the National Center's taken part of that, lead from the Head Start programs, which have constantly, or have recently been, you know, focusing on families. So we've realized that since Head Start is more of a targeted program, that for Parents as Teachers, which is a non-targeted program, we still wanted to strengthen families as well. And so we've kind of piggybacked a lot of their research, and realizing that, again, children develop and get ready to enter school, ready to succeed because they have strong families and strong backing. So with that, the National Center for Parents as Teachers, which is in St. Louis, has instituted an affiliate status. It is a quality assurance program where they wanted to know that all PAT programs were meeting certain criteria to pretty much bear the label, Parents as Teachers. There were a lot of PAT programs across the nation, but they were not all equally being put out to the families, I guess. So they have come up with some twelve essential requirements for a PAT program to be certified. The Joplin PAT program is well on its way to becoming a certified program.
Awesome.
In doing so, in meeting those twelve essential requirements, it has caused us to not services many families in the community, because for those families that are at high risk, we're visiting them more often, because we know intensity really matters if we're going to help that family grow and be strengthened. So we're not visiting quite as many families, but we're making more home visits. So if you, in the information I put in the board packet, you'll see that even though we're servicing less families, we're making quite a few more visits. And so, so the other requirements are just making sure that we're providing research-based information, child development information, so. We've also formulated a screening team where we are going out into the childcare centers and home providers and doing developmental screenings, starting with children as young as three months of age. Previously, Parents as Teachers, we started in a year at doing developmental screenings, again, realizing that for some delays, a year was already a year that we could've had some services, maybe through first steps or whatever that we were referring. And we've added another educator to our teen program at the high school. With the three locations being, you know, flax in the two campuses, that was a lot for one person to meet the demands of our teen program. And we've also divided that group of teens into ones that are already parents and expected parents. So, again, we're doing about six meetings a month at the, at the high school location, so getting some really good one-on-one with some of those students. And we've had a large increase this year of dads participating. It's, it's not just for, you know, for the moms or the pregnant moms, it's for the parents. So that's been a really nice thing. We receive a grant from United Way to service families at the highest-risk families. Previously, we could service thirty-five families on that grant. This past year, the United Way increased that to seventy families. So that was quite a boost to our budget, which was very, very nice to, for them to write that grant for us and include us in that, so that we can see those seventy families either once a week or every other week, depending on the needs of the family. One of the most exciting things, I think, we just did recently, and it was with the help of Bright Futures and the Raylana, call it cosignment clothing thing, was that Raylana gave all the clothing to Bright Futures, and Bright Futures contacted us, and all the clothing that was sizes six and below, they gave to Parents as Teachers. We had a group of parents and staff sort clothes, and a couple of Saturdays ago, we had a free clothing giveaway, and we had over eighty families participate and come get clothing for their children. It was, to me, the most exciting thing was the fact that we had parents helping. It was parents that are typically at our higher-risk families, not all of them, but some of them. And so they had a chance to give back to the community, which is one of the things in strengthening families that we're trying to do, is, is, you know, empower the parents. So that was our first attempt at that, and I was walking on air for a couple of days, and I apologize to Kelly that I didn't have any photos. I was just, we were really busy, but, anyway. We've referred about seventy-two families to other community agencies in the, in the community, and we've provided forty-four opportunities for parents and child activities times. We do two a month, for sure, but then if you add the teen ones in there, that kind of bumps that, that number up. And we have about thirty-five to forty families attend those parent-child connections. We've been very fortunate this year to have several churches in the community offer space for us, because to have them in the daytime has been very difficult. Since we share McKinley School, there's just, you know, the kids are there, the students are there in the daytime. So First United Methodist Church and another church that has just signed on with us has offered to let us use their, you know, family life centers to, to provide space for us, so we're really fortunate with that. This year, each parent educator has an iPad, so that they can connect with resources if a parent asks while they're in the home. That's been, been very helpful. They can just get online right away and, and look up things for them. And we've purchased new hearing screening equipment that we can do screening, hearing screenings on children as young as three months. So that's kind of, that's it for us. Any, any questions?
You talked about your grant, is that a renewable grant?
Um, we've had that grant, believe it or not, for fifteen years.
Oh.
It has grown from servicing twenty-five families now to seventy.
Cool.
And it is renewable every year. I rely on United Way to do that footwork and, and get that grant. I mean, I off, you know, I work with them to, to give them some information, but, but we're very fortunate that, that they write that grant, and it comes out of the Department of Mental Health. So I'm, it goes usually from July to June thirtieth, and I'm hoping we'll get it again, because it really does allow us to provide more parent-child connections, more, we give a book at each home visit, we give safety items. If a parent needs a fire extinguisher, then that grant provides them a fire extinguisher or smoke alarms. We've provided, you know, like, safety locks. We did have one family that's, that's little three-year-old could manage to get out of the house with, with, you know. We don't know how they were getting out, but they were getting out, and so we were able to provide some little alarms for the doors, you know. So just little things like that, that is typically not in our budget, so.
Cool, cool, okay.
So what changes are you making?
Well, as we progress with the affiliate status, and more and more families possibly needing two visits a month, we'd like to add some staff as the, the space allows. And we're also just looking to, to become that certified program, you know, meet all those essential requirements, which some of them are a lot of data-keeping, which is new to me, so.
And when will you know about the certification?
Whenever I tell them I'm ready. It's one of those things where we're, you know, we're moving forward, and when we can meet at least sixty percent of, of the, it's the benchmarks. If we're sixty percent at the benchmarks that they set, then they will come out and certify us. There is a cost to have them come out and certify us, so I want, I want to make sure we get certified the first time and not pay that cost more than once, so we're working real hard towards that.
And all of your educators went through a brand-new curriculum program?
Oh, yeah. Two years ago, PAT revamped their curriculum, which reflects more on dealing with families and strengthening families, and so we are now all certified in that, and...
You have monthly meetings also in Springfield?
Yes.
With that grant?
To, to, with that anonymous, they call it anonymous grant to help us get ready for the certification, which, it's anonymous, because whoever's funding that technical assistance for us wants to be anonymous, so. And there's no money involved in that grant, it's mostly just technical support, so.
Professional development.
Right, from the, from the National Center, so. And we've had one visit from the ladies from the National Center, and we were, we were on track, that was last September, so.
Cool.
So we're doing good.
Patty does a wonderful job. She coordinates, she keeps us very up-to-date on any new regulations that are, are coming. She, every month, of course, she, she does her budget and makes sure that everything is posted like it's supposed to be, and I'd like to thank her for all of her hard work, and the other nine educators getting out in our community and going into the homes and giving those, those families the special support that they need to become successful parents and/or, or just be able to have those extra resources that are available. So, thank you very much, Patty.
One thing I did forget to make, we enroll all the families in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library.
Tell them how many that you screen, too. How many children do you screen?
Oh, it's in here somewhere.
It's like eleven hundred students. And that's just the older children this year.
Well, that's from three months to five years, and that's since May first of last year.
That's a lot of screening.
Eleven hundred screening.
Lot of screening.
A big portion of that's the kindergartners, but, which are, you know.
She also is screening some of our children at the pediatrics. And so what's been so nice is that they're giving us the room, they're giving Parents as Teachers, and the screeners a actual office there on Thirty-second Street, so that when children come in for well checks or any time that they enter, they can sign up for screenings through Parents as Teachers. And so that has increased our screenings, too, of being able to meet the needs of children right there, so.
That's awesome.
We're very happy to have that.
And I just add, you know, with the Reading Matters Initiative, getting ready to come full steam ahead, we'll be working closely with Parents as Teachers to utilize them as a resource, to get more information about the importance of early literacy and kindergarten readiness to those young families, too. So we're really excited about that, so that's to come. I assume we need a, an approval this evening, like for the board to take action on program avail?
So moved. Second. Ms. Sharp, Mr. Steele, discussion?
Good job, Patty.
Good job, guys.
Thanks.
Please vote.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, guys. All right. We will now move to the items that were removed from the consent agenda, which are the athletic fields and tennis courts.
If I could have Archie and Mike go ahead and come on up to the front for this item?
Sorry, Archie.
What's that? I guess maybe it's a good starter, maybe you guys can just explain items eleven B and C, which are the bid packages numbers three twenty-two and three twenty-five, the recommendation that's being made related to athletic fields and tennis courts.
Which we had in a late addendum. Yes, sir. That was in our folders.
For, for the tennis courts and for the...
Athletic fields?
Athletic fields, yeah.
I guess my question is, it just, the action item was vague.
Okay.
It just says athletic fields, I don't know what you mean by what's included in your athletic fields, and then it just said alternative one, alternate one, which there wasn't any backup to say alternate one was this.
Okay, very good. The, the athletic, the athletic fields, I guess would be all of the, all of the synthetic turf for, for the sports fields.
Can you just go ahead and just rattle those off, so, so the board and the public can hear what they're saying?
Sure.
And these are turf?
These are, these are turf.
Okay.
Athletic for baseball, for softball, for the practice football, and for soccer. Thank you. And so there's four turf fields.
Practice soccer or real soccer?
No, real soccer, practice, practice football. And that would include, you know, fencing around those, around those facilities, that includes, I guess, basically everything from, from final grade to final prod, you know, final product for, for those facilities.
Lights, scoreboards?
Lights were, lights were in the previous package for the electrical. Alternate number one that you asked about was for the track, track, which we bid as, as an alternate to go around the practice football field.
Okay, so on this action item for athletic field, package three twenty-two and alternate one, that's all of our sports complex?
Correct.
And, and a track to go around the football field?
Yes.
What did you take out for athletic fields?
What did we take out?
Uh-huh. Did you tell me at any athletic fields?
No.
Okay. Okay.
There was a base bid for all the fields, and then the alternate for the track, and the track and field event, shot.
Yeah.
Okay, so is, are all those things, like the jump pit, all the stuff for track and field, or at the high school?
Yes.
So that's included in...
If we accept alternate one with the sports fields package.
Okay, alternate one includes high jump?
I think that's the confusion.
Long jump, all that.
The track and the related accessory events.
Oh, here we go, yeah.
Here we go.
And right now, we have four tennis courts, is that correct?
Four, four tennis courts was the base bid for...
And then we have an alternate for more?
And we had an alternate for four.
Okay.
So the base bid for the tennis court was roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for base bid, and another two hundred and seventy for the alternate.
But the action item for the tennis courts didn't include the alternate. And the, the first action item for the athletic fields did not include alternates.
Alternates.
That's why, but we did get a new place at our board, an update for the athletic fields to include the track, but not for additional. But I'll just talk about this one at a time.
Yep.
So the recommendation is to do all the fields with an alternate and four tennis courts, instead of taking, instead of doing eight tennis courts?
Is there two action items?
Yes, there's two action items. I'm just talking about athletic fields first.
Just about the athletic fields first.
And then tennis courts, they, they took them out for some reason, I'm not really sure, but...
We've heard both ways. The, with or without the track, basically, for your discussion and approval, whichever.
So it's the recommend, I'm sorry, Phil?
I guess my other question is, is on the athletic fields and tracks, are all those replacement or some of those new additions to the main campus?
We had all those fields prior to the tornado.
But no track?
But no track, that's correct. And we had four tennis courts pre-tornado. Now, they weren't synthetic, they were all natural turf.
Natural turf?
Yes.
But we're gonna replace them with synthetic?
That's the, yes.
Now, we had a maintenance cost, I think they told us originally up in the beginning, somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars a year, I think, was the number?
It was over that?
Yeah, by time.
Lot less labor, striping, mowing, fertilization.
Water, every...
And just use, you know how much junk gets used.
What's the life expectancy on those synthetic fields?
Well, you got junk as an example, and we're, are we at year ten yet on junk?
No.
Not quite?
About seven, I think.
Seven.
You're seven.
The warranty's for eight, and, and we feel with proper maintenance, we can get ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve.
But that's extended with one of those groomers, correct?
Correct.
And I, and I could be wrong on this, we talked about it one time before, but, you know, some fields will get used more than others. You know, the practice football field right outside the gymnasium for PE, I suspect it'll get used a lot, and I assume that durability is directly related to the amount of use, and so we could see anywhere from twelve years to plus that at some, on some locations, possibly, or not?
I would hope so, you know, I really do, you know, from, show me from Missouri, but I, I think was, I would hope to make twelve, at least some.
Mike, I've heard you say before that the, when you do replace, you replace the skin and some of the infrastructure down below can remain?
Yes.
All of it, yeah, just the skin.
What in the, the band planning on using that, those facilities also?
So there's a one-time expenditure.
No.
No, they have their own...
And then...
Up towards twentieth street.
Where they can walk right out of the band room, out the front of the form art center. We'll have a natural turf field there for them.
Okay.
Will this track field be used for track meets at the high school? Was it...
Practice, we'll have a meet at junk.
This, this eliminates the need, now, it does a couple of things, obviously, it's Jeff's call how that, those spaces are utilized, but, you know, we, right now, as I understand, all our middle school students, as well as our high school students, all practice track at, at junk.
Together.
All have to, and then everybody has to be transported over there for that, for that, use of that facility. And having the track at the high school makes a whole lot of sense on a lot of levels, so that kids can obviously use it during PE time, gives us a new resource in that way, as well as being able to practice, practice at, at the high school site, and then use junk as our, as our track meet location, because of the facilities that we have there.
And how many lanes?
Eight.
Eight lanes?
Is it eight?
I think, I believe it was eight.
It's a full-size.
Regulating?
It's a regulation track.
Would a cross-country team get any limited use of it, Jeff?
Sure.
All right, so the recommendation, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
I think I know what the recommendation, I'll make a motion to accept the bid with the alternate?
Yes.
Second?
So that is Ms. Landis, Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
And that would be...
Package number three twenty-two, including alternate number one.
Yes, and that would be action item eleven B that we removed.
And that, that would be included in track?
Yes, that was alternate one.
And all the pole vault and everything else that goes with the track and field?
Yep.
Baseball, softball, practice football, soccer, fencing.
I have to ask, when we talk about equipment, and I probably already know the answer to this, but it says equipment, I assume that's maintenance equipment versus pole vault mats and that kind of thing, I guess.
Yes.
All right, all right, please vote.
Will we have to have a separate groomer for those turfs? Will we have, I know we got one that junked.
Probably throwing one in.
We anticipate using the same piece of equipment.
And hauling it over?
Yeah, roading it over and...
Okay. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, that moves us to action item eleven C, tennis courts. And that would be bid number, bid package three twenty-five.
We don't have anything separate on that, do we?
No.
Well, that's just...
And that recommendation was for four tennis courts to replace the four that were at the high school?
And what's the cost for the, to add four?
The alternate was two hundred and seventy-five, one, two seven five, one six five, to accept the low bidder's alternate to add four court courts.
The first four are two fifty?
Two fifty-seven.
Two fifty-seven.
Two fifty-seven, oh five oh on the first base bid of four, the additional four courts are two seven five, one sixty-five.
Why are there more?
Well, there's, there's perimeter drainage already installed for the first four. You'll see the concrete trench drains, those aren't there, so those would have to be added. The, the site is prepared for all, with red clay, the tabletops there for all eight.
And it's on, this on the property that was donated for tennis courts?
Paul was our realtor.
Our first four are on...
First four off of that street to the east of Ohio.
Twenty-fourth and Ohio. I mean, I just want to honor the person that donated property for tennis, to put tennis courts on it.
And four replacements that were covering that property.
And there's also a parking lot in that general area as well, just for tennis.
It's across the street.
Yeah.
First, first four are on...
And those are all post-tennis, correct?
Correct.
And who's the, or both, is alternate and the three twenty-five bid the same person?
Yes.
And where's that person from?
They're from Kansas City, McConnell.
And you've seen their work?
Mm-hmm.
Is it fences and nets and everything?
Fences, nets, the backstop.
Lights, well, the lights, you say, are in the electric?
Lights were with the, with the electric.
So is this action item with the alternate, because it doesn't say it has the alternate out there?
No, we could amend it to, to be that way. We'd have to add the, the cost, total cost would change.
I would make motion that we do package three twenty-five plus the alternate of the additional four.
Second.
So do the second, now I'll ask a question.
But it's not on their action item. He said they'd have to amend it.
So that would be Ms. Sharp, Mr. Kimbrough, what discussion do we have?
So you want to do the four, then add the four?
At this time, so all eight are built at the same time?
All eight at the same time, so that they're ready to go when the school...
So right now, we could not have practice...
You wouldn't, I mean, the practice...
You know tennis.
Well, there's only four courts, so you essentially only have eight players playing singles, and if you've got a varsity squad of eight people plus JV, you'd have to split them up.
Other kids are sitting.
Yeah, and if you have four, you couldn't do any... Yeah, and if you have four, you couldn't do any of your meets there.
What's the minimum amount you can have to have a tournament there, whatever you call it?
Eight, eight courts.
Eight courts.
So this will bring, enable the, the team, the athletes to actually have...
That's a use of your own court.
Enable Joplin to actually host at Joplin High instead of...
Do we pay the city now to use their tennis courts?
Yes, we do.
So we eliminate paying to use, I don't know what that amount is.
And then the students drive themselves to...
Jeff, what's that amount? Do you know?
The students drive themselves to the tennis courts, so we're liable for them from leaving the high school to getting there as well. There's not a shuttle bus or anything that takes them there.
The tennis team's grown quite a bit over the last three or four years. I mean, they've probably got 60 kids, boys and girls to go in.
They just had one go division one, right?
I want to offer that on the donations we've accumulated so far, the USTA, if you recall back the summer of '11, brought us a $50,000 check, United States Tennis Association. And then we have another pledge from that same organization.
So that could go towards that?
The grade matching grant.
Okay.
We have not collected the pledge yet, but that was pledged at that time. And there's been some discussion about possibly other, you know, possibly donations.
So we could approve it now, then if we get the donation, we can add that back to our budget reserves?
Yes, if we received...
So my recommendation, if we move forward with that, we'd be a very aggressive one on that.
Okay.
Because it is an add. We talked at one point in time, you know, as we looked at the additions, because we put back everything, you know, that we had before, originally. The track is obviously new, much needed, something we needed prior to the storm. We're able to do that now. And we had four tennis courts before. If we add four more with the resources that we have, USTA, and some possible other donations, just working really hard on the, on the donation side of things, making it meet. So we just need some, need some help with that from the school board and others. And I think we can pull it off. It's not, it's not an insurmountable sum, donation standpoint, we're working really hard.
Well, how much, then we have insurance money cover part of the courts?
That's covering part of the original.
The original four.
The original four, that's the FEMA, the FEMA piece is just applied to the original floor as well as the, the insurance proceeds from there.
So FEMA is included in the price of tennis courts?
Original four, yes.
What insurance didn't cover, which insurance didn't cover tennis courts, isn't that correct? Correct, Paul? If I remember right, it seemed like there was an issue with that.
Outside assets, there was not full coverage. We, I think we, we took a hit on some of the outlined pieces on the grounds.
So is it the 75%?
75% of the cost.
Of the original four?
Yes.
Okay, so we only are paying 75% of 250,000?
Well, that's not quite. We didn't have post-tension before. If we didn't have post-tension, we just had...
Having concrete.
So their involvement would be not upgrade, but to give you what you have.
Well, maybe, okay, but they're paying probably at least half?
Probably, that's a good guess, I mean.
And so these new eight courts will be regulation for hosting tournaments, high school tournaments. They'll be built to, because if I remember correctly, you probably could not have hosted...
I believe so, I believe they were.
On what we had prior, correct?
He just didn't have a number, he just didn't have a number.
We didn't have a number, we had to add the eight instead of four.
So, yeah, if you just build four, it would be almost, you wouldn't be able to utilize them, so they would just be sitting there.
Well, my college programs, we've got, you know, we're introducing tennis at the elementary, middle school level now, and it is a growing program.
I mean, we've got a grant for that from USTA, too, to help, you know, put that in all the areas.
So it's a matter of fill in the void, I think, I think some, we can work it, work it and get it done.
Tennis is...
If we're going to do it, we need to do it.
Yeah, they have to do it right.
It's no cheaper than now, it's not going to get cheaper 10 years from now, five years from now, it's not going to get any easier.
The post-tension's better, too.
Yeah, the same company doing all eight of them that do it at the same time.
Well, the other piece, too, is, you know, just like the track, we don't want to come in and tear up our landscaping again, you know, a year, two years from now. Now's the time to do it, get it done, turf, you know, get the grass growing, get it, get it sprinkled around it, looking nice, and walk away from it, it'll be done.
So, just to clarify, the post-tension, what you're saying is a little more?
Yes.
That's done to keep the courts from cracking, is that correct?
Right.
So it adds life to the courts?
And quality to it.
Okay.
That's the main thing about tennis courts, is cracking and the water damage and drainage. You've got to drain it properly.
Archie says they haven't done one in the metro area that he can remember.
That wasn't post-tension.
Okay.
Because we talked about it as a potential VE thing when we were talking about saving money, but we wouldn't recommend it.
And I've seen tennis courts that were done on the, say, on the cheap, and, you know, that's just an idea.
You don't do that.
No, we don't want to do that. You said the first four had lighting on that, now we're going to add, have to add lighting to the next four.
Oh, you got it, well.
I don't, I don't approve the lighting for the, for the second. That would, that would be additional, and I don't recall that number off the top of my head.
Lighting for the new four. I just moved the post.
It was $500,000.
Yeah, we didn't have lighting on them.
Is what it was, to add lighting to the, to the softball and the football field was $500,000.
They're separate, they already said lights.
Unless you're talking about the four courts.
Well, that's why we got the four courts that we're just talking about, we're adding the four courts, they don't add lights to those.
We never, yeah, we never have them.
That's where, for the expanded courts that we did not have before, that, that's where a donation can pay, can really help, you know, with the lighting and that sort of thing also. And just so you have spacing in mind, the first four, the replacement are off of Ohio Street going west.
Right.
The next four that we don't have, that we're talking about expanding, are just leveled over to the telephone poles right in the west.
To the west.
To the west, straight west.
And to the west of the poles are the couple lots we bought on the cul-de-sac, but they're not a part of this, I mean, we own the lots, they could be future tennis or whatever, but they're not a part of this eight, eight court picture.
All right, so I've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 We've had some awesome ribbon cuttings.
We have another one tomorrow.
We have another one tomorrow. I want to thank all the staff and students for bearing with us the last few years, because it's sure paying off in the end, appreciate it. Spelling bees are coming up, so you might have students at home that are practicing their spelling. And I enjoyed reading the honor roll, so, saw a lot of people's names that I knew in the Joplin High School honor roll, so, thank you for their hard work.
I have two things first and foremost. This is the second year that I've been able to participate in school board appreciation night, and it's really an exciting time for me. But I do want to sincerely thank all the schools, administrators, educators, students, everybody that put so much effort into the items that they gave us this evening. I do, did get a big kick out of going home last year and opening our prizes, and so I'm looking forward to that again. I wear all the T-shirts with great pride and, and carry my coffee in the mugs with great pride and all that. So, thank you, thank you for all the efforts that went into that, because it's a very busy time of the year, and I really appreciate that.